Hello and welcome to the ATPE Podcast, brought to you by the Association of Texas Professional Educators and covering the hottest topics on Texas educators' minds today.
Welcome to the ATPE Podcast. I'm your host, David George, and today we're breaking down the latest Texas legislative session and what it means for you as an educator. This session brought intense battles over school funding, growing political attacks on public education institutions, and a major policy shift with the passage of vouchers in Texas for the first time. It was a deeply political session, heavily influenced by the upcoming elections and campaign funding from outside interest groups. We're joined once again by ATPE Governmental Relations Director, Monty Exter, to help us make sense of it all. Thanks for being here, Monty.
Yeah, good to be here again.
Let's start with how the tone of the session was set. Politics going into the session were already tense. How did that pre-election pressure influence the way lawmakers approached public education?
So I would say in a couple of ways. I mean, first and foremost, it was very, very clear what the priorities from state leadership, primarily the governor, were going into session, particularly with the concept of vouchers, but even beyond that, I would say with some of the other issues that came rolling through the session. In addition to that, it was a highly charged session, as you said, in terms of being fairly tense, in terms of being fairly antagonistic, which didn't always translate necessarily into being anti-education, but it was certainly, again, highly charged with regards to who was going to be in control, a little bit more partisan than normal, and a little bit more aggressive than normal, I would say.
Did you notice any shifts in political alliances that we've seen in past sessions, or was it mostly the same groups driving the agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I would say a little bit of both, right? So in terms of the groups who were in Texas, who were normally the outside groups, right? Who were normally driving agendas, they, by and large, still were doing some of those things, but there were certainly some new players. You know, you've had the Tim Dunn "Empower Texans" crowd around and talking about sort of education-related things for a long time. You've also had the sort of pro-accountability protesting crowd around for a long time, and they didn't necessarily change all that much. You did see certainly was a new emphasis from the folks who had funded the governor during the election, the Jeff Yass pro-privatization crowd that's sort of outside of the state certainly had a big impact. You also saw, sometimes with a big impact and sometimes with a lesser impact, what maybe felt more grassroots-ish in terms of a parental crowd. Like, there was a lot to do with parental rights during the session, but at the same time, you also saw some of those same parental crowds being sort of very maybe pro, not necessarily libertarian, but libertarian in their approach in terms to, you know, very much local control, they were relatively anti-voucher, you know, some of those things. And so where they were aligned with where state and national policymakers wanted to be, they had a lot of momentum. Where they were disaligned on, say, like, the voucher issue, they had a hard time gaining traction. There were also some other organizations. For example, there's a pretty strong group of organizations in Texas that are anti-lawsuit, very tort reform-oriented organizations. There were some liability issues that came up within the education sphere where they were actually sort of on our side in terms of not creating these new causes of action against the education environment or against educators specifically. And while they have in the past been very powerful, they were having some hard time getting traction on several things this particular session. You also saw a lot of behemoth-type organizations duking it out over non-education issues during the course of session, and those issues oftentimes had huge impacts on the session and sometimes even, you know, spillover impacts in terms of what would get held hostage here or there, sometimes in exchange for movement on education bills.
Well, one of the biggest headlines from this session was that vouchers finally passed. This has been a longstanding goal for some groups, and it finally broke through. What made this year different?
So I would say it really was, again, that influence before a session started, the electoral season before the session, all of the money that came in, not so much from the in-state cast of characters who have been around for 20 or 30 years, but from the out-of-state folks like Jeff Yass, like the Betsy DeVos group, some of those types of folks. So you saw, and this actually gets back to your last question too, in terms of like alliances within the legislature itself, you know, there was a big freshman class that came in during this last session, and they were primarily folks who were more rural. They were a lot of the folks who maybe would have voted against vouchers in the last session, you know, or other sort of moderate Republicans who were replaced by typically less moderate folks. And whether they were more or less moderate, they were certainly more inclined to just take Abbott's priorities and run with them, whether or not it was a priority that their individual House district had expressed over the course of maybe the last two decades. And so you saw enough of that movement there that it paved the way for some of those bills. Now, I will say, even with that amount of movement, it was still pretty tight, actually. You know, it came down to sort of the day before the floor vote on vouchers. I think that we recognized that the bill was likely going to move forward, but the governor actually had to, you know, do an audible to get a call in from the president himself to try to scuttle, and he did effectively scuttle, a provision that would have sent the voucher bill to the Texas voters. You know, at that point in time, really, most of the advocates were not necessarily trying to outright stop the bill. We were just saying, okay, well, if you're confident that this is what voters want, let's put it on the ballot and ask them. And that's something that the governor refused to do, and again, in fact, refused to, to the point that he called in a favor to the President of the United States to make a call in to the House Republican Caucus in a meeting just before the vote to effectively convince them not to do that.
Wow. Let's talk about the implications of vouchers in Texas. How quickly might educators and families start to feel the impact?
So it is definitely going to be one of those issues where it's going to roll out, it's going to start rolling out slowly by design, but then it's also going to roll out and ramp up over a course of year. So the way the bill was drafted, nobody is actually able to get a voucher until not this upcoming school year, but the school year after. So they will spend this next year standing up some of the logistical programs in the background, the vendors, who are going to be pulling tens of millions, about $80 million out of the billion dollars to keep in their own pockets. So some of those vendor contracts will go into place, some of the systems will go into place to be able to run the program that passed. And then the first round of actual vouchers will roll out in the second year of the biennium, so not this upcoming school year, but the following school year. And that's of note for a couple of reasons. First of all, right, they continue to say over and over again, it's only a billion dollars in this biennium. Well, yes, except it's only for the second year of the biennium. So you can expect that at a minimum in the upcoming biennium, it will double to $2 billion because you'll be running the program for two years instead of one year. But in addition to that, it also started out from an appropriation standpoint fairly small in terms of the fact that we've got about 300,000 kids in private school in the state of Texas right now. The voucher only funds about 100,000 kids total. So even if no kids from public school transfer over, you can only actually cover a third of the kids who are already in private school. So if you were to cover all the kids in private school and you were to cover even a modest, like, 2% to 5% of the kids currently in public school, you will need billions and billions more dollars in that program to be able to do that than what's currently in it. So I think that, you know, we can expect, while we may not see huge changes in the way the program is designed, we would likely see pretty big changes in the amount of money appropriated towards the program over the next four to six years.
So we saw significant funding debates this session, too. What happened on the funding front? Did school districts come out ahead, or were they left behind in favor of pushing the vouchers?
Uh, both. So unless, unless I will say, you know, did we have plenty of needs to be able to utilize a billion dollars to help kids in public schools that we did not do? 100%. That is just the truth. We could have definitely used that billion dollars and, you know, utilized it to help kids who are in public schools, particularly maybe who have a little bit less means than some of their private school counterparts. That said, where I say both on that issue is really in terms of like, did districts, you know, come out ahead, or did districts get left behind? There was a school funding bill that passed that, you know, has about $8 billion in it. And so that is a significant amount of money in terms of pure school funding that doesn't incorporate a tax break in it. It's the biggest we've had in a while. It actually has a little bit more funding in it, not a lot, but a little bit more funding in, you know, inflation-adjusted dollars than House Bill 3 did back in 2019. Nowhere near the biggest bill, you know, you hear that all the time. Oh, it's the biggest one ever. No, in inflation-adjusted dollars, House Bill 72 back from 1995 was over $14 billion bill, all spent on public education. So it's not the biggest, but it is big. Now, why do I say then "both"? Because it sounds like they got a big chunk of money from a historic standpoint. Well, they did, but very little of it is in discretionary pots. So while lots of teachers out there are going to see pretty sizable pay raises, we think, based on this particular bill, certainly based on the intent of the way the bill was drafted, you're also potentially still going to see districts who are giving pay raises and riffing teachers at the same, because they didn't get a whole lot of money to actually deal with their budget deficits. And so, for example, the bill moved some money around within the school finance system to create the appearance of an additional $55 in the basic allotment. And I say "appearance" because some districts, that'll be relatively true, other districts, the money they lost in the shuffle to create that $55 will be as much or more than the $55 they gain. But let's just for a minute say that the $55 is everybody in the basic allotment. You've got another allotment that's pretty wide discretionary funding, that's a brand-new allotment, that's for, you know, fixed costs, the fixed cost allotment. That is equivalent to about $106 in the basic allotment. So altogether, in what eventually passed, you're looking at about $160. Well, House Bill at one point had almost $400 additional dollars in the basic allotment in it, which is not what passed. And if you were to go back to House Bill 3 and the funding level that schools were at when House Bill 3 passed, and you were to take that forward in terms of purchasing power today in the discretionary funds that districts had in 2019, you would have had to have added about $1,300 to the basic allotment, and instead, we added 160. So from a discretionary standpoint, you know, and over the last couple of years, right, federal funding has dried up in terms of money that was coming in through COVID, plus now we have significant questions about additional federal funding drying up. You know, just today, we saw reports about $7 billion of federal funding not coming to the states for summer programs, that who knows what they're going to do with it instead, but apparently they're not sending it out. And so you've also seen all of these budget reductions in some of the budget bills that are moving through at the federal level right now in education, too. So you've got these decreases in federal funds in addition to the inflation that's happened, and so there's been this huge erosion that districts are dealing with that's created these big deficits. Nothing really in this bill, or very little in this bill, addresses those deficits. The way the pay raises are rolling out, which is a huge amount of money in the bill, about half, a little more than half, actually, that's not, that doesn't help district deficits at all, because we're saying you have to continue the spending you were already doing, and then these pay raises are on top of it. And while the state is covering the pay raise, or most of the pay raise, there's actually some associated parts that are not being covered. That's not discretionary money for the district. That's not going to lower your deficit at all. You've not reduced the cost you already had. And so, again, as I said before, you're likely to still see campus closures, you're likely to still see people getting laid off, even in the midst of, you know, $4 billion worth of teacher raises rolling out.
You know, something else that stood out in this session was the increased hostility toward groups that support public education, especially TASB, but also organizations like us that represent teachers and advocate for their interests. The rhetoric around these groups was loud and often misleading, but it seemed to mirror some of the tactics we saw during the push for vouchers. If that kind of anti-teacher group sentiment keeps building, do you think it could become the next big political weapon, the way vouchers were? And what can educators do now to push back before something like that gains more ground?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, I think that if now that vouchers have passed, that fervor doesn't cool, then it is going to be an issue both for organizations like ATPE and the members that we represent, and our members' ability to interact with their profession in a professional manner, but also with education as a whole. I mean, for example, you mentioned TASB, you know, while, while there are often instances where, you know, everyday educators and administrators are not always on the same side of the fence on everything within district policy land, TASB actually saves the state tons of money in terms of the services that it provides to districts at a very low cost, that if you were to go out and individually piece those together from other for-profit entities as opposed to their organization, would cost four, five, maybe as much as 10 times what districts are currently, you know, paying for those particular services. And so that's certainly an issue. And I will say that, yes, I mean, there are, there was that fervor, there are things that we need to do, and we need to start maybe by understanding where some of these things come from. Some of it certainly was a positioning to be able to weaken pro-public education voices ahead of this voucher session. But beyond that, I think that there is a contemplation or a recognition within some of the political class that making negative emotions around public education issues can be utilized as good campaign fodder, to gin people up and to turn out your voters. It's really not different than some of the other areas where we see, where we see something that is, you know, hyperbolized over and over and over again into this sort of dire issue that maybe it is and maybe it isn't, but it motivates people because people largely go to the polls, not due to logical reasons, but due to emotional reasons. And so you can either give people hope or fear, you can either give them joy or anger. It doesn't necessarily matter as much what the emotion is, it's that the emotion is strong, and the other side weaponized the ability to create strong emotions around some aspects of public education coming out of COVID. And there's already some natural alignment, right? ATPE is obviously not a union, but we oftentimes do get lumped in with some of the national unions because nuance is the enemy of a clean talking point. So, you know, you had the national organization that TASB used to belong to during some of what was being weaponized around parents' rights that came out and said, you know, hey, you know, they were talking about the fact that there were some people who were being sort of flown in or driven in who were not, some of them maybe were parents within these districts, some of them weren't even parents within these districts, but certainly they were coming as parts of other grassroots organizations who were being very disruptive at school board meetings intentionally for political reasons, having nothing to do with the school board. So TASB's national organization made a comment about that. Perhaps their comment was a little strong and ill-advised, but that then allowed the other side to say, oh, look, TASB and all of the other organizations affiliated with their national organization is anti-parent, which is not usually where you want to be in a political talking point. And so that helped to build this movement. And then lawmakers and folks who are lawmaker-adjacent recognized, right, these organizations had significant political capital, and they were a roadblock to them getting done what they wanted to get done. So they started rallying against them and turning them into an enemy within their voter base. And these things tend to be a bit like the Titanic, you know? You can't turn those ships on a dime, but once they get going and turning, they're going to plow through most anything. So now it'll be, does the ship slow? Does the ship start to turn back now that there's not a lot of pressure behind it? Does there continue to be pressure behind it? Because it's still maybe a good way to get your people elected. It's a little too soon to know that, but in terms of what ATPE members and educators in general can do, there's a couple of things. You know, first of all, be an active participant, you know, in your community, you know, continue to be engaged in things like the PTA, where you've got cross-pollinization of parents and teachers. Be active participants at your school board, and also just voice your own opinions, because people will find that you and they probably share a lot more in common than not when you do that. And survey after survey after survey shows that most people, if you ask them policy-based questions, want the public education system to do exactly what the public education system is currently doing, just they wanted to do even more of that, which means more teachers and more funding. The majority is actually already with you. In addition to that, I think it's important for ATPE members to go out and talk about the fact that we are a state-level organization, we are inclusive in terms of, you know, all the way from the bus barn to the superintendent, that we have a non-union philosophy, that we're not affiliated with the national unions. I mean, I will say, you know, some of these things, while they have policy impacts, they have partisan roots, you know, and there's certainly a partisan aspect to being anti-union at the national level. And a lot of times, what we're seeing is these national campaigns that are just getting pasted on top of the state, whether they make sense or not. We're a right-to-work state, you know? We don't have any true unions in the state of Texas. We have some folks who are affiliated with national unions, not us. So making those differences, those differentials with like your friends who maybe are teachers who aren't a member of any organization, or who are just, you know, parents, or not even parents, just voters, just people, is certainly important. The other thing I think that's important is, if you get an opportunity to make a connection with your actual lawmaker, take it. You know, you can do that through ATPE. We still have Advocacy Central up and going, you can still email, call, text, you know, your personal representative and senator, and make that connection and let them know, you know, what you're doing in the classroom and that, you know, you're just out there being a good person trying to educate students, you know? You're not part of some crazy left-wing indoctrination factory.
Well, let's talk about session outcomes. Were there any bright spots for educators?
Yeah, I mean, I will say, like, we had four priorities going in, and we passed three of them. In fact, we had multiple bills that passed that dealt with three of them. You know, we had a priority on funding and teacher pay. We had a huge teacher pay raise that went through. Was it written in the way that we would have written it? No. And frankly, the way we would have written it might have actually gotten a little less teacher pay out to the people who are getting the current bill. It just would have done it in a way that was logistically more known, so that we aren't going to see some of the unintended consequences that we already see rolling out. But that said, still, huge teacher pay. While we didn't get the basic allotment increase we wanted, we did still get eight and a half billion dollars into public education, so that is a large funding piece. One of our other major planks and priorities was around teacher certification. There's a huge problem with uncertified teachers. House Bill 2 also dramatically addressed that. We've got a timeline for which there can no longer be uncertified teachers in foundation curriculum areas, so that's, you know, math, reading, science, and social studies. All of those teachers, within very short order, will have to be certified in those particular positions. In addition to that, we had a priority about working conditions and student discipline and school safety, and we had major bills on all of those issues in terms of giving teachers and schools more ability to handle discipline issues in their classrooms and on their premises. We also doubled the school safety allotment. And so, yeah, we had actually a lot of wins, you know? We also, on both the discipline and the safety issue, we had a cellphone bill that passed that will allow districts, or require districts actually, to make policies that, you know, should dramatically reduce screen time within classrooms and improve discipline there. You know, we've got, we have a lot of bright spots, you know? There are things that weren't always written the way that we would have liked them best, but they were still movement forward, and we will still be coming back next time to try to improve them again.
Okay, so last question, Monty. Do you have a message to educators as they process the session and they gear up for the next election cycle?
Yeah, absolutely. So I mean, I think as you're processing this session, keep an eye out for messaging coming out from ATPE, probably see some things in the newsletters coming out from our legal department. You'll certainly see things coming out from the Government Relations Department in terms of more detail on the individual things that have passed. Pay attention to things like this podcast that come out. And then, you know, also take advantage of some of our other tools. So we started a program during this last cycle called ATPE MAP, the Member Advocacy Program, and our first iterations of that coming out were really to replace some of our state-level advocacy training, but we've already released some local advocacy training. We will be releasing more local advocacy training, more things about how to be more engaged with your school board and on your campus, more engaged within your district, with your local elected officials. You know, building those bridges and those communications is going to be key. You know, there is definitely a truth, you know, to the old saying, which I will paraphrase, because if I try to do it, you know, verbatim, I will botch it, but, you know, you can either let stuff happen to you, or you can control what's happening. There are a lot of educators out there, and you have a lot more capital than you think that you have. And so you can either expand and try to be the master of your own domain, or things are going to continue to happen to you, and it's probably not going to be super positive. That said, you know, understand that you have the most ability to work locally, but a lot's actually going on locally, you know? There's a lot that's happening within the education sphere, some at the state and even more at the federal level, that maybe you don't have as much ability to control in a right-now kind of way. But you definitely have the ability to make But you definitely have the ability to make relationships with the lawmakers who will be able to come in and make big changes at the state level. You definitely have the ability to make relationships with your school board members who still do have a lot of control over your profession, and with your local administration in terms of trying to repair some of the bridges that bind administrators, educators, and parents. Because when those three groups are all on the same page, things tend to go really right.
As always, thank you for being here, Monty.
Thank you.
To our listeners, if you have any questions or feedback, please reach out to us at com@atpe.org. That's C-O-M-M at atpe.org. Make sure you're subscribed to the ATPE Podcast and leave us a review. It helps us reach more educators like you. But most importantly, stay engaged. This is a tough environment for public education, but your voice, your vote, and your advocacy have never been more important. Thanks for listening, and we'll see you next time on the ATPE Podcast.
Thanks for listening to the ATPE Podcast. For more information about becoming part of Texas's largest community of educators, please visit atpe.org.